Ladies and gentlemen, I believe it's time to begin tonight's city council meeting. I proudly call this council meeting to order. And I ask the recording secretary, Ms. Dawkins, our deputy clerk, to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Unmute here.
Burkhart? Burkhart here. Clemens?
Clemens here.
Ruby?
Ruby here.
Haven?
Haven here.
Kilburg?
Kilburg here.
Maladra?
Maladra here.
Marx?
Marx here.
McGowan?
McGowan here.
Swanson? Unmute Swanson?
Swanson here.
Great, thank you. Mayor, everybody is present.
Fantastic. Again, good evening, everyone, and welcome to History in the Making. I do want to provide some original comments, if you will, before we begin the meeting. Tonight's city council meeting is a virtual city council meeting, taking place pursuant to the emergency powers of the state of Illinois and the city of Geneva. As most of you know, and those tuning in know, Governor Pritzker has issued several emergency executive orders due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and a few of those orders concern local government. Executive Order Number 5, dated March 15, 2020, suspended the Open Meeting Act requirements of having a physical quorum present. Moreover, this order postponed official government activities when possible, required meetings via video and telephone access made available to the public, which is exactly what we are doing this evening. Executive Order Number 16, dated April 1, 2020, extended all previous orders, including Executive Order Number 5, effective until April 30, 2020. Therefore, after consultation with our city attorneys, we are following the requisite requirements and guidelines established by the governor's executive orders for tonight's virtual city council meeting. We understand this virtual meeting is to be prescribed in the most transparent fashion. Recognizing our use of video and telephonic technology may cause some bumps and hurdles, so we ask for everyone's patience and indulgence as we traverse this new methodology together. We will utilize this mechanism for council meetings for as long as the relevant executive orders remain in effect. And once we can get back together with some semblance of order, we will do so expeditiously in an attempt to meet as a city council live and in person pursuant to any applicable new rules requiring social distancing and otherwise. For citizen participation, and I want to stress this part, for citizen participation this evening, individuals were able to email or drop comments off prior to the meeting, and individuals are also able to email to publiccomment@genova-il.us. Again, that's publiccomment@genova-il.us during this meeting for those comments to be read at the appropriate time during these proceedings. Lastly, those wishing to may log into this meeting. Under this process, those seeking to log in will be let in to the meeting during the public comment portion of the agenda. And then, they will be asked to disconnect from the meeting following their comments. We will, of course, assist in that disconnection if, in fact, it's not done so correctly. They, of course, are more than willing and welcome to continue to view the meeting through the city's website, our cable channels, and, of course, the city's YouTube account. Again, this is all very new, and we promise to do our very best to ask for your patience, or I should say, we ask for your patience, as we endeavor to make this new and temporary meeting reality as useful and interactive as possible. Again, thank you very much, and just like we were present with each other, we will begin this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I kindly ask Alderman Becky Ruby to please lead us in the pledge.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Ruby.
You're welcome.
Just a reminder, folks, there is, as you may have noticed already, approximately a two to three second delay. So on the off chance you are curious as to why someone might not be responding immediately, we are accounting for that delay, and I would encourage you to do so as well. So, let's begin with the agenda. This item, number three, is new business of public comment. I'm going to wait for just a bit to see if we have any comments that have come in via the public comment email account. We will then address those accordingly, so everyone bear with me, and we'll just wait just a moment. And Stephanie or Pete, I'm going to ask you whether there's anything else prior to opening the meeting that has a...
There have been no comments submitted at all today.
And I see no one trying to connect in right now.
Without objection, ladies and gentlemen, we'll continue to item number four. Public hearings, special items, and presentations. Item 4A is to consider ordinance number 2020-11 regarding emergency powers and local disaster declaration. Under normal circumstances, we turn this matter over to Stephanie, provide some preamble, as it were. Stephanie tonight is going to provide some commentary regarding a number of issues that should be coupled together, but do so in just one fell swoop so that it perhaps makes things a little smoother. Stephanie, the floor is yours.
Do you want me to do that before you get a motion on the floor, or...
Oh, yeah, forgive me, it's a motion for item 4A.
So moved.
Was that Alderman?
So I got Bruno, first, motion by Bruno, second by Clemens?
Alderman Clemens, correct. Ms. Dawkins?
Thank you. So I'm actually, as the mayor stated, I'm going to summarize the first three items as one kind of grouping because they kind of all go together. So you'll recall, on March 15, the city's corporate authorities adopted ordinance number 2020-10, sorry, finding that a state of emergency and local disaster existed as a result of COVID-19. It granted the mayor the extraordinary power and authority to exercise by executive order during a state of emergency such powers of the corporate authorities as may be reasonably necessary. The ordinance presented tonight for consideration restates the findings in ordinance 2020-10 and finds that the state of emergency and local disaster caused by COVID-19 existing as of March 15, 2020 will minimally continue through April 30 and likely into May 2020, and grants the mayor the extraordinary power and authority to exercise by executive order during a state of emergency such powers of the corporate authorities as may be reasonably necessary to respond to the state of emergency. A state of emergency declared as provided in this ordinance shall expire not later than the adjournment of the first regular meeting of the corporate authorities after the state of emergency is declared. The second item on the agenda is an ordinance ratifying those actions taken by the mayor during the local disaster emergency. The items are listed individually along with backup information in the agenda packet. And lastly, the third item on the agenda is a resolution finding that a local state of emergency continues and sets forth directives for conducting city council, board, and commission meetings for the duration of the gubernatorial disaster proclamation, or by a duly passed resolution rescinding these directives, whichever occurs first. These directives include combining the COW and city council meetings into one city council meeting and providing for virtual meetings like the one tonight for the city council and other boards and commission meetings that are needed to ensure continuing the operation of the city of Geneva. So while I summarize those all together, they are three separate items for the council to take action on, and mayor, I turn it over back to you.
Any questions regarding the summary provided by Stephanie, which apply to all items 4A, B, and C? We are simply considering 4A right now. The motion on the floor is offered by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Clemens. Deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhart? Burkhart, aye. Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Haven?
Haven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Ten affirmative votes, mayor.
Ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item 4A passes unanimously. Item 4B is to consider approval of number 2020-12, ratifying actions taken during local disaster emergency. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by, I believe that was Alderman Marx?
Yeah. Seconded by Kilburg.
Seconded by, we'll give this one to Alderman Kilburg. Ms. Dawkins, anything more to elucidate, or is this clear based on your previous comments?
Previous comments, stand.
Anyone have any questions regarding item 4B? Seeing none? Hearing none? Ms. Deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Burkhart? Burkhart, aye. Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Haven?
Haven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ten affirmative votes, zero nay.
Thank you, Stephanie. Item 4B passes with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absence. We move on to item 4C, Consider Resolution Number 2020-22, finding that a local state of emergency continues and formally adopting directives which are imminently necessary for the protection of public health, safety, and welfare. Is there a motion to consider this resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Swanson. Anything additional to add, Ms. Dawkins?
No, sir.
Any comments or questions from the council? Ms. Deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Haven?
Haven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
And Burkhart? Burkhart, aye. Ten affirmative votes.
Item 4C passes with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We move on to item number five, ladies and gentlemen. Amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments from any member of the council? Item number six is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council and can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion, seconded by Alderman Kilburg. Deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Ruby? Ruby, aye.
Haven?
Haven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart? Burkhart, aye. Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ten, ten affirmative votes, mayor.
The omnibus agenda passes with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. According to my scorecard, we skip down to item number 11, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our deputy clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Okay, there are three groupings of bills. The first from March 16, total $3,988,700. Bills from April 6, 2020, total $1,884,244.70. And from the April 20, 2020 AP Packet, $3,369,92.72.
Mayor, I...
We are committed to consider all these in one fell swoop, all three payments. Is such a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion. In all three cases as presented, which are also available on the city's website and our packets, and there is a second. I see a hand going up. It's very exciting, and Clemens wins the second. Any questions or comments? Deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Haven?
Haven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart? Burkhart, aye. Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Ten affirmative votes, mayor.
Ten affirmative votes, zero absent, and zero nay votes. Paying those bills, all pass unanimously. Item 13, folks, that says resolutions, petitions, and item 12B is to consider approval of Resolution Number 2020-24, authorizing declaration of surplus property, vehicles, and equipment as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I believe that was Alderman Swanson? Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. That wasn't you, was it, Bob?
That's okay, I'll meet the motion.
Okay, sorry, bud.
That's all right.
We have a motion by Swanson, a second, an item 12B. Any questions or comments, Stephanie?
13B?
13B.
13B?
This item is a resolution authorizing vehicles and equipment that are no longer utilized throughout various city departments. This is really a housekeeping matter. The list is included in the agenda packet for review. Staff request that all items be declared a surplus, and those items that have a resale value will be sold at auction.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Move by Kilburg.
It was rather lengthy, but we're going to do a roll call vote on these. So deputy clerk, a roll call, please.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart? Burkhart, aye. Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
And Haven?
Haven, aye.
Ten affirmative votes?
Ten affirmative votes, zero absent, zero nay votes. Item 13B passes unanimously. Item 13C is to consider approval of ordinance number 2020-13, amending Title IV to Liquor Control, Section 4-2-13, adding one Class C6 Brewery Liquor License for Art History Brewing at 649 to 653 West State Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, I believe, through the...
Second?
Alderman Brugger, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Terris. Ms. Dawkins?
Sure, okay, so this is one of those situations where I'm actually going to summarize both item C and item D, as they both involve liquor licensing. The first item, as stated, is a request to add a C6 Brewery License for Art History Brewing. The second request is to add an A1 Liquor License for Benny's Beverage Depot. The Liquor Commissioner has recommended approval of both, and both have gone through the background checks and all other things that they need to do, and the licenses would be issued upon approval by the council and granting their permits from the building and fire departments.
Any additional questions or comments regarding item 13C? Hearing none, seeing none? Deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart? Burkhart, aye. Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Haven?
Haven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Ten affirmative votes.
Item 13C passes unanimously with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We jump to item 13D, as in David. Consider approval of ordinance number 2020-14, amending Title IV, Chapter 2, Liquor Control, Sections 4-2-13, adding one Class A1 Liquor License, excuse me, Liquor Store Liquor License for Benny's Beverage Depot at 710 Commons Drive. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Aye, and I'm sorry, the second was by?
Haven.
Haven, thank you, sir. We have a motion by Swanson, a second by Haven. I believe deputy clerk's statements stand as presented with respect to 13C. Any comments or questions from the council regarding this matter? Ms. Deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson? You need to unmute Swanson, please.
Swanson, aye.
Thank you. Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart? Burkhart, aye. Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Becky, you'll need to unmute your microphone, please.
Ruby, aye.
Ruby? Haven?
Haven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
That's ten affirmative votes.
Ten affirmative votes, item 13D, as in David, zero absent, zero nay votes. Item 13B passes unanimously. Item 13E, folks, to consider approval of Resolution Number 2020-25, authorizing a waiver of the bidding process and authorizing the city administrator to enter into an independent contractor agreement with First Inspection Services Incorporated for plumbing, plan review, and inspection services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Marx.
Kilburg, second.
Oh, Alderman Kilburg, well, sir. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, I'm going to combine the next two items on this one. They're both literally housekeeping items on one of them. The first is a contract with First Inspection Services, Inc., to provide professional review and inspection services for all new or modified plumbing systems as required by state law. All costs associated with the plumbing inspections and plan review are passed on to the permit applicant. There is no change in the fee schedule for this contract. The second contract is an extension of the facility's cleaning contract for City Hall, Public Works, Finance, Police, and Tricom facilities with citywide building services. This fee also for this contract remains the same as it's been in previous years.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions or comments from the council? Deputy clerk, roll call, please.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart? Burkhart, aye. Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Haven?
Haven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
That's ten affirmative votes.
Ten affirmative votes on item 13E. Nobody absent, nobody voting nay, the matter passes unanimously. Item 13F, folks, to consider approval of Resolution Number 2020-26, authorizing the city administrator to execute a two-year extension for the city's facility cleaning services contract with citywide building maintenance in the amount of $83,283.30 per year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Clemens. Ms. Dawkins?
Swanson?
Aye, Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart? Burkhart, aye. Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Haven?
Haven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Ten affirmative votes.
With ten affirmative votes, zero absent, zero nay votes, item 13F passes unanimously. Item 13G, to approval of Resolution Number 2020-27, authorizing acceptance of proposal to bind coverage of the city's property, inland, marine, general liability, automobile, employment practices, law enforcement, public officials, crime, cyber, excess liability, and workers' compensation insurance coverage, effective May 1, 2020, at a total cost of Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alderman McGowan, I believe, seconded by Alderman Marx. Ms. Dawkins?
Thank you. The city's commercial insurance packages, as the mayor indicated, are set to expire on April 30, 2020. In the packet, there was a memorandum from the broker, Arthur J. Gallagher, Inc., that outlined the renewal proposal for these coverages. Also on the line tonight, we have Assistant City Administrator Ben McCready, if you have any additional questions.
From the city council, any questions or comments for Mr. McCready? Seeing none? Hearing none? Deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart? Burkhart, aye. Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Haven?
Haven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Ten affirmative votes.
With ten affirmative votes, zero absent, and zero nay votes, item 13G passes unanimously. Item 13H, folks, is to consider approval of Resolution Number 2020-28, authorize the city administrator to execute a proposal from Clark Environmental Mosquito Management of St. Charles, Illinois, to conduct the 2020 and 2021 mosquito abatement program in an amount not to exceed $50,538. Is there a motion?
Bruno's move so.
Bruno moves so. Is there a second?
Second by Kilburg.
Alderman Marx? Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the proposed resolution authorizes the city administrator to accept a proposal from Clark Environmental for mosquito abatement services. Services include public outreach, monitoring larva control, and adult side applications as warranted. As you all know, it's been the policy of the city. As you all know, it's been the policy of the city that we only spray in instances of known West Nile and not for nuisance purposes only. Clark has been providing these services to the city since 2014 and are recommended for approval. On the line, we have Director Babica, who can answer any additional questions you may have.
Any questions from the council for Director Babica? Seeing none? Hearing none? Deputy Clerk Dawkins, please take the roll.
Alderman Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Alderman Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ten affirmative votes.
With ten affirmative votes, zero absent and zero nay votes, Item 13H passes unanimously. Item 13 is to consider approval of Resolution Number 2020-29, authorizing execution of a labor contract utility dynamics out of nine-hundred-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and eighty cents for the 2020, 2021 underground electric cable replacement project. Is there a motion?
Move by Kilburg.
Alderman Kilburg makes the motion?
Second by Bruno.
Second by Alderman Bruno. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so I've combined Items I and J together as they relate to the same project. We have the first is a resolution authorizing the execution of a labor contract with Utility Dynamics for the Underground Cable Replacement Project. Work is to take place in the Geneva East Phase One, Unit One subdivision. And then the second item that you will be considering is a resolution authorizing the purchase of the materials for the previously mentioned project. On the line, we have Superintendent Wright, if you have any additional questions.
Any questions or comments from the council for Superintendent Hell Wright?
Project, work is to take place in the Geneva East Phase One, Unit One subdivision. And then the second item that you will be considering is a resolution authorizing the purchase of the materials for the previously mentioned project. On the line, we have Superintendent Wright.
Uh, forgive us, folks, I heard an echo on that statement by Ms. Dawkins.
It's corrected.
But I think the emphasis was duly noted. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wright?
Burkhart with a question?
Yes, Alderman Berger.
So we see that this project has been scaled back a bit to meet the budget. Could we hear a bit more about what, how that will affect the work?
Superintendent Wright, are you available to respond to Alderman Berger's comments?
Hello? Superintendent Wright?
Yes, we can hear you.
You are logged.
Okay. Uh, since the contract is a per-unit contract, all we had to do to change the amount of contract was to remove the units that we wanted to remove to reduce the amount. The section of the work that isn't going to be done is a run-up east side drive from Geneva Drive to Division. Also had another problem with that section. We needed an easement that we don't have right now. So we removed that section. All of Geneva East Phase One, Unit One, south Manchester, south of Geneva Drive, Manchester, that area will be completed at the same time.
Okay, very good, thank you. It did, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Anyone else, questions or comments for this superintendent? Deputy Clerk, please take the roll call.
Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Ten affirmative votes.
Ten affirmative votes on Item 13I? No absent, no nays, item passes unanimously. We skip to Item Number 13J. Consider approval of Resolution Number 2020-30, authorizing the purchase of materials from Wesco for the fiscal year 2021 cable replacement project in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Is there a motion?
So moved by Bruno.
Second by Swanson.
Bruno makes the motion, Swanson makes the second. Ms. Dawkins' comments, as stated earlier, relate to this matter as well. Any questions or comments for Superintendent Wright? Hearing none? Seeing none? Deputy Clerk Dawkins, please take the roll.
Ruby? Unmute yourself, please.
Sorry, Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Uh, Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
That's ten affirmative votes.
Item 13J passes unanimously with ten affirmative votes, zero absent and zero nay votes. Item 13K, consider approval of Resolution Number 2020-31, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an IGA, intergovernmental agreement with Kane County for the water main relocation necessary for the intersection improvements at Fabian and Kirk in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
McGowan makes the motion, makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Uh, Alderman Marks.
Thank you. Okay, so this one, Kane County is currently reconstructing the intersection of Fabian Parkway and Kirk Road to provide additional through lanes, right-to-left turn lanes and drainage improvements. To accommodate this intersection work, the city of Geneva needed to relocate a water main and hydrants so that the water main would not be under the widened pavement. The IGA presented for your consideration and approval has been reviewed by legal counsel for the city and by Kane County. And also I have Superintendent Van Gescam with us this evening and he can answer any additional questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from the council for the superintendent, Mr. Van Gescam? Seeing none? Hearing none? Deputy Clerk Dawkins, please take the roll.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
That's ten affirmative votes.
Item 13K receives ten affirmative votes, zero absent and zero nay votes. Item 13K passes unanimously. Item 13L, consider approval of Resolution Number 2020-32, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of Solinas, excuse me, Solinas Preistall K144L polymer from Midwest Chemical and Equipment at a cost of one dollar and forty-two cents per pound throughout fiscal year 2021 for a total not to exceed the budgeted amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. Folks, this is the finest Solinas Preistall K1441L on the market. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Alderman, Clemens made the motion, Alderman Marks, second. Ms. Dawkins? Let's see you trackle this one.
Alrighty then. So the wastewater treatment plant utilizes a polymer to aid in the thickening and dewatering of processed sludge. Due to a price increase in 2018, staff evaluated an alternative polymer based upon effectiveness, feed rates and cost per pound of sludge processed. Solinas, Solinius provided a higher quality, more active polymer that required less volume of solution to be utilized with greater sludge feed rates, which reduced the overall cost of the polymer per pound of sludge. Staff is recommending entering into an agreement with Midwest Chemical and Equipment for the purchase of this polymer at a dollar forty-two per pound, delivered for the period of the fiscal year May 1, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Again, we have Superintendent Van Gescam with us if you have any additional questions about polymers or sludge.
How's that for an intro, Bob?
Wonderful.
For the superintendent, Mr. Van Gescam. Seeing none? Hearing none? Deputy Clerk Dawkins, please take the roll.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Ten affirmative votes.
Item 13L receives ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes and zero council members absent, therefore passes unanimously. We jump to the last item, folks. Item 13M, consider approval of Resolution Number 2020-33, authorizing the city administrator to execute a memorandum of agreement with 617 State Street LLC in an amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Is there a motion?
So moved by Bruno.
Bruno makes the motion with extraordinary enthusiasm.
Second.
Sec. Next with a dramatic pause, Alderman Marks. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So the property at 649 West State is under redevelopment to be occupied by Art History Brewing. A fire suppression system is required to be installed, which necessitates a larger water supply to the address. The Geneva Municipal Code allows for the city to participate in the cost of installation of the major water main required to serve the property. The proposed resolution is a public-private cost-sharing agreement for a ten-inch diameter water main to be installed connecting water mains in West State Street to Peyton Street. On the phone this evening, we have Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer Brian Schreiber, who can answer any additional questions you might have regarding this project.
Questions or comments from the city council for Mr. Schreiber?
I have a question, Burkhart.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, this is interesting. I guess, uh, my questions would be, have we done this with businesses in the recent, uh, past? And then this agreement seems to be with the renter of the property, not the owner of the property, is that correct? Or the brewery that's going into that property, not the owner of the property itself?
That's my understanding, yes.
And Brian, have we made similar agreements like this with, um, businesses, do you know, in the last decade?
We have done some. We did, uh, cost sharing with the developer of the townhomes up at Stevens and First Street, the northeast corner there. There was some additional water main work that needed to be done with that development and we did a portion of that cost with them.
And so it sounds like the benefit to the city would be, this is a property that we might want to see, uh, higher use for at some point or, um, just an area of town that's developing and so it would improve the water service to that area, is that correct?
And our intent is to extend the water main all the way from State Street up to Peyton, uh, completing another loop within our system, adding some redundancy and it'll improve the water quality in that area, too.
Very good, thank you, that takes care of me, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else, questions for Mr. Schreiber or Ms. Dawkins? Did I see Alderman McGowan's? Yes.
Um, thank you. Just as a follow-up, what do you mean, um, what is meant when you say that the water quality will be improved somewhat?
By adding some redundancy and adding an additional loop within that water main system, it'll improve the flows within that area.
Oh, okay, so just basically a delivery of the water, the quality of the water itself remain the same?
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Anyone else, questions for Mr. Schreiber? Deputy Clerk Dawkins, please take the roll call.
Okay, Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
That's ten affirmative votes.
With ten affirmative votes, Item 13M passes unanimously. Folks, it's time to head into closed session on pending litigation and setting of the price for sale or lease of real property. We'll entertain a motion for that purpose in that Crystal Dome.
So moved.
Alderman Marks makes the motion?
Second by Bruno.
Second by Alderman Bruno? All in favor of heading into closed session? Please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? We're back in open session, let's entertain a motion first to return to open session, which of course requires a motion, a second and a roll call vote. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marks makes the motion?
Second.
Alderman Marks makes the second.
I'm sorry, Clemens?
Deputy Clerk Dawkins, please take the roll.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart? Star six, please.
Burkhart, aye.
Thank you. Clemens?
Clemens, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
We're back in open session, folks.
In there, if I may? Um, I just want to confirm with you that there were no emails received or any public comment received during the meeting.
Great, thank you. There being no additional business, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Alderman Bruno makes that motion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you all very, very much, thanks for putting up with all of us. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, all did a great job.